I'm ready.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening and welcome to the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty virtual village council meeting pursuant to the extended executive order number twenty dash sixty-nine as issued by Governor DeSantis. Municipalities may conduct meetings of their governing boards without having a forum of its members present physically or at any specific location and utilize in communications media technologies such as telephonic or video conferencing as provided by section one twenty point five four sub B, I mean, excuse me, sub five sub B two of the Florida statutes. Meeting will be opened with a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Madam Clerk, welcome.
Village Attorney Seraphin.
Present.
Village Manager Benton.
Here.
Councilman Brady.
Here.
Councilman LaFredo.
Here.
Councilman Melz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Birch.
She's muted.
Present. Madam Mayor.
President. Thank you. Thank you. For this September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty virtual council meeting, the Miami Shores Village Council is convening via Zoom as posted on the village's public notice, which also identifies how the public may view, listen, and participate in the meeting. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. The agenda and also recording documentation are available on the village website. In order to ensure the public has the ability to view and listen to the meeting, the village is broadcasting the meeting through all the usual communication channels that are provided when a village council meeting is held fully in council chambers at village hall. You may listen to the live meeting by calling the dedicated Zoom phone line as indicated on the public notice. To provide a reasonable opportunity for public comments, the village has encouraged the public to submit written comments prior to the start of the meeting using the village's e-comment function. The village clerk will read ecomments into the record. Please note, as the presiding officer, I may exercise authority to limit the length of time of public comments in the interest of time and to preserve decorum and order. Please note, public comment is not a Q and A form. Therefore, if you have any questions, please contact individual council members and/or staff prior to or after the meeting. However, all comments will be included as part of the official record for this virtual meeting and will be considered by the village council prior to any action taken. All interested parties are required to abide by all state, county, and local emergency orders and are urged to practice social distancing. If any proposition is being continued or rescheduled, the opportunity to be heard may be at such later date before the village council takes action on such proposition. Uh, Madam Clerk?
I received one public comment from Victor Bruce residing at three seven zero northeast one hundred first street. He states, "Hope that you're all doing alright six months into this quarantine and that you're still staying safe by wearing a mask and by practicing social distancing. Firstly, want to thank the council for their role in allowing for the planning and zoning board hearings to continue. Just today, an application for a new four thousand four hundred square feet house that was approved by the planning and zoning board a few months back has been uploaded to the village's online permit portal. This means that engineers and residential contractors will be getting paid for their work while this pandemic continues. So, thank you very much for your efforts. I also want to bring up two items that right now are all but ideas, but could bring great benefits for the future of our village. Number one, the installation of commercial gas service, be it natural or propane, for northeast second avenue. We all know how the installation of the new sewer line has been instrumental for the establishment of new eateries, and we are all extremely grateful for the village's efforts. But ultimately, without fuel needed to run a kitchen, we will reach the ceiling for new restaurants very fast. Natural gas lines can be costly proposition, but propane could provide a better alternative for the supply of gas to restaurants. It might even be profitable for the village to take on this project. Number two, the other item is an exploration of having the clubhouse leased to a developer that can turn it into a boutique hotel, as well as a first-class clubhouse welcoming tournaments and other events. The existing building itself is old and in bad shape. It would make little sense to renovate. Nonetheless, it is perfectly located off of the recently upgraded Biscayne Boulevard, and the size of the property lends itself for development and construction even while the existing building continues to be in use. The property has incredible commercial potential. While it can continue with its role as a golf clubhouse for the village's golf course, the boutique hotel could be used by families or friends visiting village residents from other cities, states, or countries. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you, and please stay safe. Madam Mayor, this concludes public comments.
Thank you. Item five A.
Approval of the September first, two thousand and twenty village council meeting minutes.
Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
Unmoved that we approve the minutes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Do we have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Birch. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Item six A, resolution of the village council of Miami Shores Village, Florida, delegating full authority to the village manager to make approval, pre-approval, or disapproval decisions regarding the country club management operations on behalf of the village without the need for village council approval and providing for an effective date. This item is brought forth by the village manager.
Mr. Manager?
Madam Mayor, I'm going to defer to the village attorney on this.
Mr. Seraphin.
Who can I defer to? Um, it's fairly self-explanatory. You've asked us to negotiate, uh, a new management agreement for the country club. For various legal reasons, um, we're including, uh, a requirement for village approval of various more or less day-to-day operational things. Things like the menu at the country club, the greens fees, what logo will be used, all of that, and more. And not surprisingly, the party with whom we are negotiating is concerned that every time they need to make a change or want to make a change, they're gonna have to wait for village council approval. And, uh, we have suggested to them that Tom's the manager, he makes most of the day-to-day decisions for the village anyway pursuant to the village manager form of government that we've had for many, many years, and, uh, that he would be making these decisions for the village. They have asked, can we please put that in resolution form and get it passed? This is my effort to comply with it. Uh, it doesn't preclude Tom from bringing decisions to you for your consideration, but I feel that he's got a pretty good grasp on what to bother you with and what not. Part of the reason why we're not running this country club ourselves is we don't want to have and historically have not wanted to have the council bothered with all of these day-to-day operational decisions. And the administration would request approval of the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Seraphin. Any comments from council? Uh, Mr. LaFredo?
Yes, just for clarification, the village attorney was kind enough to speak with me about a week ago. But my understanding is, in order to do this management agreement, it's necessary for property tax reasons and also for general legal reasons to have us have a much more controlling situation with regard to the operational day-to-day decisions. Is that correct?
It is correct for a number of reasons. Uh, we want the management agreement to provide for a relatively high degree of control by the village. This is not a lease where we're giving someone an interest in the property and letting them run it the way they want to run it. This is a management agreement, they're managing for us, and we want to make sure that we retain a relatively high degree of control.
Right. So, this is a, this is a, a kind of a sea change in how this is gonna be done, and we're gonna, the council's gonna delegate to Tom most of the day-to-day management decisions, but he'll come back to us if he feels it's something big that we need to deal with.
Exactly right.
But that means that the operator under the management agreement won't have to come to council every time he wants to change the price of a hamburger.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Do I have any other comments from council members? Okay, I, I do have some comments. Oh, Mr. LaFredo? Go ahead.
No, no thing. I'll, I'll wait.
Okay. Um, and this is certainly, uh, no disrespect to the manager who has been, and along with Mr. Seraphin, diligently negotiating this on behalf of the village. I have some concerns with the resolution as written, however. Um, I'm not so much concerned with the day-to-day and who, that they want to change the price of a hamburger or buy additional toilet paper. Uh, but as I read this resolution, um, and as a person that was elected, uh, by the village, uh, folks living here in Miami Shores, I have some concerns about the delegation of this totally in its totality. It seems very broad. Uh, there's not a lot of specificity to it. Um, and I feel like, as it's written, um, we have a responsibility to our constituents, and while the day-to-day things seem mundane and they, I think we have a responsibility to, uh, know and be able to make decisions on behalf of, uh, the village and our constituents. And, and I can't, I don't disagree with this as it's written, I think it's too broad. There's not a lot of specificity. Uh, and it doesn't tell me exactly what he's able to approve versus what he's not. Secondly, uh, are you telling me it's at his discretion to bring something before us to make a decision upon or to vote upon? Can you give me more clarity, Mr. Attorney?
Sure. Uh, two things. One, we haven't yet finished negotiating it, so I can't give you an exhaustive list of all the things that we retain control over, but what we said in the resolution is, to the extent regular operational approvals from the village are required, that's what's being delegated. We're not giving him authority to amend the management agreement, to change the business terms between us and them. It's just, we have included for a number of legal reasons in the proposed draft, and it's a work in progress. We have another meeting set tomorrow. Um, things like, and, and the ones I can think of now, uh, to tell you about is the, um, the menus, the fee schedules, um, hours of operation. Uh, we do put in a provision that says, um, to the extent they want to keep all of those the way they currently are, that's pre-approved. Nobody needs to, any further approval for that. But changes for those things, and they will happen, um, that's what's being delegated. Um, I'm sorry, you have a second question, then I don't remember.
The, the, I was just, I'm looking for specific, I mean, you just broke down some of the things that...
I can't tell you all of them because we're not done yet, and the reason we put this on the agenda now is because the existing lease is supposed to end at the end of this...
I understand, and I'm fully aware of when the existing lease is supposed to end. My concern is, is, is this just relating to the lease or it's ongoing, right? When, who made, who has the discretion to come back before us to inquire about changes made in the contract? Furthermore, any other, and what are the monetary limits? Like, it's just, it's, it's very broad to me.
Let me see if I can, uh, throw some light on that. This has nothing to do with changes to the contract. Once this management agreement is signed, Tom does, and it won't be signed until you approve it, Tom does not have the authority to change any of those terms. This has nothing to do with that. This just, the contract that's under consideration has provisions in it that says that the manager, remember, he's managing for us. The manager is, is limited with respect to certain operational decisions. Things like, I don't even think the hours are included. Uh, I, I think I've, uh, articulated the, the big ones. Um, Tom, can you think of any other things that we put in there that he needs approval for?
Perhaps, um, if they were doing a tournament on a day, um, you know, if they were to bring in somebody that wanted to do a, a tournament on, say, a Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, um...
Banquets.
You mentioned the scorecards and all the other things, yeah, pretty much going to remain the same mark today.
Banquet contracts.
Banquets, banquets, absolutely. Uh, you know, if somebody comes and says, hey, we want to book a, a wedding reception for two hundred people, that's something you want to bring to the council every time they want to bring a, book a, a wedding reception or, or some sort of a, a reception, particularly during the holiday season.
It's just really unworkable to bring it to the council every time.
Well, and I'm not disagreeing with that, I just, I'm looking, I, I would have liked to have more definition in this document, e- even though, understanding we're still in negotiations, so I think it's premature, but I, I can't support this as written, it's just, it's, it's broad. I mean, the things you just mentioned, why aren't they here and specified in the, in the resolution? Uh, Councilman Melz?
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I, I didn't realize there was going to be, um, much concern about this. I understand your position, Madam Mayor, but what, the way I interpreted this is if you go back six months, we had zero oversight. We, we didn't deal with menus, we didn't deal with greens fees, or we didn't deal with tournaments. I couldn't care less. That's, that's not my role, and, and I don't want that. I have enough on my plate worrying about things that, uh, that, that truly affect the village. So, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, somebody, is that because we're changing it from a, a lease agreement where the country club handled all of the minutia to this sort of now management agreement, that, that, I, I don't, I don't want to deal with that. I mean, why should we? I don't want to know what cup sizes they're doing, um, for, for, to, to go drinks. Uh, as far as, eh, you know, I trust Tom Benton and that the, the management agreement we had for twenty-seven years worked pretty well. I, I don't see anything changing. I, I'm not one, and I would agree with you, giving anybody carte blanche to do anything that could affect the residents, but this, to me, seems like something that, that is just as much as we trust the village manager to oversee all the other departments. I don't want to know what, what type of gas they're putting in the sanitation trucks. That's, you, you see what I'm saying? I, I understand.
I do, but...
I'm with you.
Councilman Melz? May I interrupt you for a second? I don't care what kind of cups they're getting either. I guess my question is, I can make it more nuanced, uh, because I, I hear what you're saying. I don't want to know when they change the toilet paper and when they... Uh, utensils. I just don't understand where the line is. Where's the line being drawn? Is this just operational?
Yes.
And therefore, nothing else?
Regular operational approvals. And it's, I, I'll make it clear, this is not an authority to spend any village money. This is not an authority to waive any village rights. It's just, when they need approval, look, there's, there's two options. Either we give them carte blanche, or we require approval. If we require approval, it, from a practical standpoint, they won't accept it if they have to come to the village every time. That's really what it boils down to. If they have to come to the village council...
Council, you mean. Council.
Yes.
Council.
They have to come to the village council, it'll take too long, it's, um, unwieldy would be the polite way to say it. And, um, it, 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 from their perspective, they will fight to not give us those approval rights unless we can designate a single point of contact. And, believe me, I don't think Tom wants this, but who else are we gonna give it to? You know?
Madam Mayor?
Uh, Mr. LaFredo?
Yeah, I, I share your concern to a certain extent, and not just because in, in politics, appearances sometimes become reality. And in this day and time, the way the document is written, it may be misinterpreted, especially on social media. For example, the word "full" in section one, the, the last word on the, on line three in section one is really unnecessary.
I agree.
Perhaps sends the wrong message. And we might, we might, without running up the village attorney's hourly rate, we might have a supplemental resolution to address some of your concerns, maybe at the next meeting, the first meeting of October, so that we can have a little more delineation on this, because it does seem to give Tom the right to come to us or not come to us in his discretion. Now, I know he'll do the right thing by us, but again, on social media, it may send the wrong impression to the general public or to the uninitiated. Anyway, that was my comment.
I, I have one other point, if I may, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Attorney? Yes?
Before this has any practical effect at all, you're gonna have to see and approve the final management agreement. And at that point, you'll be able to see and tell with definitiveness exactly what approvals we will be entitled to, because it will have been negotiated by then.
Madam Mayor?
Uh, Vice Mayor Birch, yes?
Yes, you know, when I first saw this item, I, I really had to begin to separate in my mind what I was seeing, which is really a definition of a village manager form of government. And why was this coming before us? And I was successful in separating in my mind, the, the village manager form of government will apply with whatever contract we approve. And so, I did speak to the manager to clarify the fact that the contract that we will get will be approved by the council, and we will go forward hopefully with a mutual understanding of what is expected on either side. Um, I was trying to put myself in footsteps of, of the management company that is treading on new territory, wanting to know, um, what a village manager form of government would mean to its contract, and that's the way I looked at it. Um, I know that we are sitting in the hot seat in terms of what this management agreement entails as we con, as we complete it. Um, but, uh, as what's really identified here is the fact that we do have a village manager form of government. And I know I'm one of the few squares in this Zoom meeting that is not an attorney, so I had to put it that way, uh, to simplify it for myself.
Any other, uh, comments? I, I, you know, it's, I certainly am not suggesting that Tom has not done a good job, obviously, he certainly has. I am just uncomfortable the way it's written, it's not specific enough to me. And I hear what you're saying, uh, Mr. Attorney, with regard to, it doesn't come into effect until we're finished, but the word "full" does bother me, Mr. LaFredo, so thank you. Um, I just, it needs to be more specific for my taste. Um, it's just really that simple. So, uh, if there are no further comments...
Is Mr. LaFredo moving to amend the resolution to take out the word "full"? Because I have no problem with that.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I would move approval of the, of the resolution with two conditions. One, to remove the word "full" on line, the end of line three, and two, that the village man, the village attorney come back to us with a refined or revised resolution at the next council meeting, delineating what he has in his mind, but what's not on the paper.
Well, I can come back to delineate what, what's been agreed to in the, uh, draft document for your approval. That's all best I can do.
Right, but it'll, it'll be, this will be implementing that agreement, so the revised resolution will be implementing that agreement, will be with a little more specificity.
Understood. Thank you.
I would second that motion. Madam Mayor, apologies, I would, uh, second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, Brady. Uh, do you need to do roll call on this, uh, Isabella? Madam Clerk?
It's my...
Okay.
Councilman Melz?
Uh, sorry, can I get clarification on what's, what's being, um, seconded and what we're voting on?
As I understand it, it's the resolution deleting the word "full" on the third line, and with a proviso that once I, we have the full list of the approvals to which this will apply, I come back and we supplement this resolution. Is that it, Steve?
Yes.
Okay, so if I vote yes, it's approved, with you just coming back listing some, some things which, um, you articulated verbally here?
Yes, I, I plan on submitting a second resolution to clarify this resolution that says that the approvals that this relates to are A, B, C, and D.
Would, would that be put on agenda for another vote? Or are we just approving? My point is this, I, I, I want to, I want to approve it now. So, am I, if I vote yes, is this done, or does it have to be placed back on agenda to be approved?
My motion...
Because I'm unclear with the amendment.
If I may.
Go ahead, Mr. LaFredo.
My motion approves the resolution with the one deletion with the proviso that they'll come back with a supplement, but as you know the law, Jonathan, if you have a petition that's filed with the court, that's, that's in. The supplement would only be something that may or may not modify it, but it goes in.
Okay. I vote yes.
Councilman Brady?
Yes.
Councilman LaFredo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Birch?
Yes.
Mayor Wagger?
No.
Motion passes. Item seven A, discussion and possible action regarding budgetary contribution to Miami Waterkeeper to support Biscayne Bay pollution prevention. This item was originally sponsored by Vice Mayor Birch. This follow-up item is brought forth by the village manager.
Mr. Manager?
Madam Mayor, uh, as, as you all recall, the last time, uh, at the last meeting, you all were discussing whether or not you had the funding and how much funding, so I just took the liberty of providing a memo to you, advising you that in the council's budget, um, you do have sufficient funds remaining if you wanted to make a contribution, um, uh, to the Waterkeeper, uh, organization. It'll be up to you as to how much it is, that, that, there was, there were several numbers that were bandied about at the last meeting, so that's something that you all will have to discuss, but I wanted to let you know that, that what the numbers that were on the table, um, there are remaining funds in the council's budget to address those, should you want to move forward with this item.
Uh, thank you, uh, manager, mad, Mr. Manager. Vice Mayor Birch, should you like to speak to this?
Yes, so originally, when I brought up this item, I've, uh, I asked, uh, for a number of a thousand dollars. Uh, Councilman LaFredo said something about twenty-five hundred dollars. I would like to support this organization at base because it does a service to our village and our bay that we do not actively do. Uh, Miami Waterkeeper is a, is a ten-year-old organization, it is rated by Guide Star. Um, it is a nonprofit that takes care of legal, professional, um, educational, and water quality monitoring for the bay. Uh, and let's look at the, the most recent fish kill was my, um, is my understanding that Miami Waterkeeper had people who were doing water samples, trying to explain to the public what the fish kill was about, how it was caused, and I would like to continue this, this relationship and support it similar to, uh, and, and that was the, what I used was, uh, the seabird station does things for wildlife that we are not equipped to do. The village does not have a boat, we don't do our own water sampling, we, we don't monitor the condition of the bay. This organization does, I'd like to support it. Um, whether it's a thousand dollars or twenty-five hundred dollars, um, either way, I feel that we do, um, we, we do and have exposed a need to support an organization such as this to help us go forward, uh, with, with, and, you know, Councilman Melz mentioned that money is tight, I understand that, and this is a new thing that we would be doing, but so is the, what has been named appropriately as a crisis on Biscayne Bay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. LaFredo?
Yeah, when I, I had a peculiar, and I, this came out at the end of our discussion, not the beginning, but I'll repeat it. We used to, during the time period in August, we would take my grandbaby for a walk every morning, my wife and I, and this is before the schedules changed, and I'm live at a hundred and second and third avenue, and when the fish kill came in about August fourteenth or fifteenth, the smell was horrendous for a couple of days, and my understanding with Miami Waterkeeper was the lead agency on interpreting and explaining it and getting it out to the public about what was going on. That said, however, I don't feel comfortable overriding Councilman Melz's objections, so if he's satisfied with the one thousand, I'll be satisfied with the one thousand for a beginning donation. But I do feel that we need to establish a relationship with this agency, because I only think as time goes on, the situation over there in the bay is gonna get worse, not better.
Thank you, Mr. LaFredo. Um, any other comments? Has there been an amendment to this? Uh, Mr. Melz?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I...
This really pains me because I can't dispute anything that Councilwoman Birch said, Councilman Lefredo said. It's an admirable organization. It's an unbelievable dire situation. But it sets an unforgivable precedent for this council. Because here, what about Bombay Beauty? They do the same thing for the environment locally. If you're giving $1,000 to a non-Miami Shores organization, you're giving our residents money, taxpayers, you know, Vice Mayor Birch or Councilman Lefredo, are you going to say no? If I make an amendment to Bombay Beauty? They're worthy. They deserve it. What about saving sage for rescue animals? I mean, there are dozens of organizations who are deserving. And now, because of the bay problem, to just to put money towards that that we don't have, I thank Tom for trying to find a line item where it is, but we don't have that money. I mean, we should give money to all the local organizations that are out there helping everything. The Miami Shores people of color, they deserve the money. There's a dire situation there. I could go on and on, and you all know I could. I don't understand why we're just- excuse the phrase, a knee-jerk reaction just to throw money out that we don't have. There's an unlimited amount of worthy organizations that deserve $1,000 or more. But we're not a wealthy community that can do that like some others. And just, we have an organization, Madam Mayor's, the Chair, the Community Alliance, they gave out $60,000. You submit grants. Why don't they submit a grant and go through the process? Why disadvantage all our other Miami Shores residents and based organizations which are doing unbelievable work? And this is nothing against them. But it just doesn't, it's not logical. It's not a thought-out, proper reaction. Because how are you going to say no to the next organization that comes before you? It doesn't make any sense. And I'm sorry for getting fired up about this. But like I said, I want to give them money. I think they're a great organization. As much as I want to give Mary Benton and Bombay Beauty money because they're saving the environment each and every day, or trying to. So there's absolutely no way, no way, I can support this. I couldn't look my neighbors in the face and say, I just gave money to one organization, and I'm going to have to say no to everybody else.
Thank you, Councilman Meltz. Councilman Birch, do you want to respond?
I distinctly recall that Mary Benton of Bombay Beauty was a public commenter who supported the idea of this initiative and of this contribution to services that Miami Shores Village cannot provide.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Birch. Councilman Meltz?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, well, no, I mean, that's one example, Vice Mayor Birch. You want me to give a list of 20 other organizations who are worthy? You know I could do that. I could give you 120 without looking at a piece of paper. That's not the point that Mary supports the other. And what about all the funding that they're going to get from the agencies and the local governments, the county, the state, federal? All those other agencies are the ones who, under the Constitution, are tasked with protecting the bay. And they have money and a budget for it. You know, I mean, I don't know what's next, but it's just not, it's not the right decision. Because then you'll have to say no to everybody else that comes before you. And I'll start making the next motions for the next groups because they're just as worth it.
Excuse me, Mr. Lefredo, let me say one thing. When we discussed this last time, I was all in favor. I'm very much in favor of Waterkeepers. I know the comfort they do. I know our bay is in dire straits and desperate need of assistance. But I have to say that Councilman Meltz's argument as presented makes sense to me. So having said that, for my take on this and based on the argument he just made, which I think is completely makes sense and is succinct, I will agree that there are organizations within Miami Shores that are deserving and maybe a better use of our funding. Mr. Lefredo?
Yeah, I respectfully disagree with some parts of Councilman Meltz's argument. I believe that one of the things you do as a government is you establish relationships, especially in new areas and evolving areas. And I support Vice Mayor Birch's efforts in those regards to establish a relationship and build up goodwill with an organization we may need from time to time. And I also would point out that just because we give to one doesn't mean we can't give to more. I think you all know that I'm the more- although it hasn't passed the council, but I would be a little more generous with council funds than the rest of the council in terms of local organization. But I support Vice Mayor Birch's argument.
Thank you, Mr. Lefredo. Vice Mayor Birch, let me ask you a question. This is a donation at a good faith because of the wonderful work that they're doing in the bay. What? They're going to be doing their research anyway. What do we get in return? I mean, what is the-
If you recall, Madam Mayor-
Are they going to be doing something specific in our area along our quarter? Go ahead.
If you recall, Madam Mayor, one of the things that was in the group of items that I presented in my memo was an education component. These people are fully capable. In fact, I saw on GuideStar today that they have done 66 such presentations. And they have a junior ambassador program that they educated 22 young ambassadors to understand the work that they do for the bay. So it's a comprehensive support organization for Biscayne Bay. And to piggyback on what Councilman Lefredo said about building relationships, I was part of recently, when the village applied for a very significant grant for our bayfront park. And I do feel that all of these organizations are interrelated. To become known as a village that really supports the bay in totality is to become known to these people. I did outline the fact that when I was first elected, they had a Miami Waterkeeper Bay Tour. It was quite comprehensive. And it had professors from the Rosenstiel School that presented to elected officials about the condition of the bay. So as far as what we're getting back, I do believe we are getting quite a bit back. And that a voluntary contribution of moderate or minimal, in this case, I think, to their budget. Size is perfectly appropriate. But I do know that when you open a door to a nonprofit, that you may open other doors. I have seen, in five years of experience on council, very little of that. Very little of nonprofits coming to a municipality saying, could you please support us? And this particular instance, Miami Waterkeeper did not ask for money. So I am more comfortable, perhaps, than Councilman Meltz feeling that this is a dire precedent.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Birch. Councilman Meltz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry, there's something I left out before. And just to put it in context, you know, we just voted to raise taxes, right? We just voted to increase. And I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, it might have been Vice Mayor Birch who either moved the motion forward or seconded it to raise residents' taxes when it comes to sanitation or garbage fees. So you're asking people to pay more money now. And now, in essence, you're giving the money to an organization as you just stated, didn't even ask for it. So I don't see the logic in it. I don't see where our role as a city, village council, is to give grants unsolicited to non-Miami Shores organizations. So it doesn't, I can't look at my neighbors and say, yep, I voted to raise your taxes, and now I'm going to give your money to Miami Waterkeepers. They didn't ask for it. And nobody else, we're not giving it to anybody else, but that's it. That's just not, in my mind, valid or logical.
Impelling argument, Councilman Meltz. Any other comments? Okay, so now we are at this portion where I get- I mean, Attorney Seraphin.
This man?
This is a discussion item. Someone is proposing, we're at $2,500. Someone's proposed $1,000. We've got-
Unless I missed a thing, there's no motion on the floor.
Okay. Do I have a motion from the council?
Madam Mayor, thank you so much. I would like to move that we allocate $1,000 to Miami Waterkeeper.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed. Opposed.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Item 7B?
Item 7B has been withdrawn by the village manager. We're moving on to announcements. If you're interested in serving on a village board, there's still time to apply. There are currently 10 village boards with village vacancies, specifically the Code Enforcement Board, Country Club Advisory Board, Education Advisory Board, Historic Preservation Board, Fine Arts Commission Planning Board, the Police Retirement Pension Board, the Recreation Advisory Committee, the Personnel Appeals Board, and the Doctors' Chartered School Board. If you're interested in serving, you may apply online. Visit www.msbfl.gov. Go to the Government tab and click on Boards and Committees, or you can call my office at 305-762-4870. Next item is Village Council comments.
Mr. Brady, we'll start with you this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to urge everyone to please, you know, continue to exercise caution and be smart. And please wear a mask. And be careful of the activities that you're engaging in so that we seem to be on the right trajectory here in South Florida. Hopefully, we can keep that going. Then, I just want to thank the, you know, the village staff and the rec center for all the great work that they have been doing. They've been helping, I know my family and many others and a lot through this early virtual schooling period in time. I know we're all eagerly awaiting the reopening of the county public schools. And just wanted to thank the council for the spirited discussion night. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Meltz? You're on mute.
I'm mute. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two things. Number one, I want to encourage residents, if you're still interested, to go to the COVID testing that the village is providing because I think we're almost near the end of our course. If the attendance isn't going to pick up, then I don't think we need to continue to use village resources. So maybe Mr. Benton can let us know if it's something that we're going to continue or we'll discontinue at some point. So, Tom, do you want to jump in on that?
Yes, today, we only had, I believe, six tests. And it's just, I think it's run its course. So we're going to announce that we're just going to have to shut it down. There just isn't enough people utilizing it. It started off real well. And then it's just been going down to the point that the contractor now is saying it's not even worth their time to come out for it now. So we're going to make that announcement here through social media that we're going to be shutting that down.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I had envisioned it like, you know, Hamilton for Lauderdale, a limited run. So, you know, that's fine. I think it served the purpose very well. And I appreciate your work and the lab's work for the residents. Secondly, if you all had maybe seen some of the- NPR had done an investigative report recently which confirmed what we had probably discussed before about recycling and how recycling is not what people believe it to be. Hence, that's why I had tried to spearhead over the last few years the reduce mantra. I think although we have a village recycling program, I'd like to eliminate and try to just reduce, get rid of the plastics, get rid of all of the things that we throw away. So I urge you all to follow up on that story. And you'll see exactly what I've been trying to communicate for years now is that recycling is not the solution. Reducing is the solution. And I urge my other council members that we take the lead on that going into 2021. And we do things to really step it up and protect our residents and our environment for our children and our children's children, and so on, and so on. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lefredo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of things, one a positive, one maybe not so much. But yesterday, I think you know that a Civil War artillery shell was found in Miami Shores. I have a friend of mine who I've known for many years who's an amateur historian. And he sent me an email today where he believes it was actually fired by a Union warship trying to chase or distract a blockade runner during the Civil War. I don't know if that's the case or not, but I want you, the council, to know that I'm going to try and follow up with him and follow up with the library and see if we can maybe have a little historical memento or a plaque for that situation, if it bears out. That said, on a more negative note, I'm not convinced that the country or the village or our society is out of the woods yet with this situation. I know tax bills are coming out the 1st of April, I mean, the 1st of November, excuse me. We're going to all send the kids all back to school. And I'm worried about what they bring home with them to the elderly and to the people that are COVID compromised. And so with that said, the item that was withdrawn, you know, I'm not going to go against five years of council work and oppose it. But I'm wondering, should we be undertaking a major capital project at this time, even if half or three-quarters of it is funded by a grant, when people, we have record unemployment and record difficulties in the society, including record levels of emotional and mental health problems because of everything that's going on? So I'm going to be talking more about that the next time. But I just want the council to consider that. Anyway, thank you very much. And thank you for all your great deliberations tonight.
Thank you. Very thoughtful. Vice Mayor Birch?
I'm having a lot of trouble with lighting today, so I'm sorry. The sun is going down, and I've just had a hard time keeping parts of my head out of it. I thank everyone for the discussion. I guess I appreciate these kinds of discussions because we're all trying to do the best for our environment. And we have been a very environmentally oriented council. I thank Councilman Meltz for his comments. And I do appreciate that point of view. And as we go forward with our 2020-2021 budget, I know that we will have various challenges along the way. And I do believe in us as a group that we will make the right decisions. I wish Attorney Seraphin and Tom Benton very good wishes as they negotiate with the management team at the Country Club. And I have confidence in them and the parameters that we laid out earlier as a council that we will have a good contract. And I thank them for their work in that regard. And thank you, Madam Mayor, for your good work in governing a meeting like this where we have a disagreement. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor Birch. I just want to say, in closing, those who are watching, spread the word also to my fellow council members who are running upon the deadline for the census filing. I think it's very important that we make sure those in our community have filled out their census forms, mailed them in. It is very important. It's critically important. And it also could be the difference between us getting certain amounts of funding that we haven't gotten half additional funding. I would encourage everyone, if you have not filled out your census forms, do still have a few weeks to do so. If you need help finding your census form or need an extra one, feel free to reach out to me at my village email site. I'm happy to help. And I do have, I know this isn't a perfect question and answer, but with regard to the COVID testing, is it the intent of the manager to end the testing this week and not have one more day next Tuesday for our residents?
Yes, today would be the last day. We had testing today. We're doing it every-
Right.
We had been doing it every Tuesday. So we're going to let our residents know that there will be no testing effective next Tuesday.
Is it not, is it the contractor, is it not prudent to give people one more week in the hopes that it would send more people out? Or are we, have we concluded that it's done?
We can do another week. I mean, like I said, I, I can work with the contractor and I'm sure I can talk them into another week. But like I said, it was, it was very slow today. I mean, and it's-
Right. The reason I suggest that is because once, perhaps, I'm just predicting, but perhaps once we say, okay, we're finished, you're going to have maybe a rush to get over there and do it if folks haven't done it. I want to give them one more opportunity. And of course, if no one signs up, that's a different story. But perhaps give them, this is, next Tuesday will be the last day. If you haven't already done so, please come out for COVID testing and then that's it.
We can work that out, sure.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. That's been a great service to our community, so we appreciate it. Thank you all. I want to send, send a special shout out to all the parents and teachers out there who've been going through this educational process in the last, next, the last two weeks. And encourage everybody to hang on and continue to wear your mask when in public. And when you can't social distance, please wear your mask and stay six feet apart. We've got to keep these things in place in order to, to, to get past this, this COVID pandemic. So please, everybody, we still have work to do on that. And I hope that you will consider not just yourself, but your neighbors and their families as well. So thank you all this evening. There being no further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good night.